Good evening and welcome to the 2021 Aspen School District Board Candidates Forum. This event is being brought to you by the Aspen area media of Grassroots TV, the Aspen Daily News, the Aspen Times, and Aspen Public Radio. I'm Brent Gardner-Smith, News Director at Aspen Public Radio. I'm joined tonight on the panel by David Kraus, the Editor of the Aspen Times, and Megan Tackett, the Editor of the Aspen Daily News. David and Megan will be asking the questions this evening, and I'll be moderating and keeping time. We'd like to acknowledge the hard work from Nathan Cox of the District Theater for setting up tonight's production, and to John Masters, Executive Director of Grassroots TV, for helping make tonight's forum possible. Tonight, we will be talking with the six candidates who are vying for three seats on the Aspen School District Board. The candidates, in alphabetical order from my left, are Lawrence Butler, John Galambos, Krista Geisel, Stacy Weiss, Anna Zane, and Dr. Susan Zimmet. Ballots were mailed to Picken County Registered Voters last week. Early in-person voting begins at the Picken County Building in Aspen on October 25th, and Election Day is November 2nd. Ballots can be returned at any time to the drop boxes located outside the Picken County Administration Building in Aspen, and also the boxes at Snowmass Village Town Hall or Basalt Town Hall. Voter information is also available at pickenvotes.com. So our forum will begin tonight with two-minute opening statements from each candidate. I will be the timekeeper, and I will warn the candidates when they have 30 seconds left by raising a yellow file folder or card, and then thank them when they have reached the two minutes by raising a red card. We would appreciate each candidate being mindful of the two-minute limit. When you hear me thank you repeatedly, you will know you have reached the two-minute limit. As in, thank you. Thank you. Okay, good. The opening statements will be followed by a round of quick questions. Yes, a pop quiz is in order for the candidates tonight, and then we'll ask you questions that are grouped by the topics of COVID response, mental health, climate and culture, equity, and the classroom. So let's begin with the candidates' opening statements. Earlier today, we drew names out of a hat to set up a random order for the opening statements. Krista Geisel, you were drawn first, and get to start us with your two-minute opening statement when you're ready.
Thank you so much. I'm Krista Geisel, and I'm so excited to be here tonight on the stage with my friends and colleagues, running for a candidate for the Aspen School District Board of Education. Our community is so lucky to have six great candidates running for school board. My family moved here four years ago primarily for the schools. As a doctor, lifelong advocate for public health, passionate believer in public education, and the mother of three school-aged children, I bring a unique set of skills to my candidacy for Aspen School Board. I am passionate about education for all children and ensuring that all children find our schools inclusive and accessible so they can achieve their highest potential, whether academically or otherwise. I spent countless hours volunteering on the District Accountability Committee, recently starting my fourth year as the co-chair, to help bring different stakeholders to open lines of communication. Discussions from these meetings were the underpinnings of this district's consideration to become a pre-Cave through 12 international baccalaureate school, which the district formally adopted last spring. When COVID started, I realized I could use my expertise as a physician to help our schools find ways to safely reopen. I spent hours with my friends last year finding ways to secure free COVID testing, the first in our county, in order to help our school community feel safer in their return to school. Compare our school district to any around the country, and our response and ability to function last year was truly outstanding. However, our system remains at a crossroads. COVID continues to challenge us as a community. Our children are at varying levels of education. The mental health of both our staff and students has been challenged. We have recent changes in school administration. The stress of the past 18 months has brought divisions between healthcare workers, citizens, parents, administrators, and teachers. Our lower-than-expected state testing scores are a symptom that shows these stresses on our system. I am a consensus builder. My skills and experiences make me well-suited to bridge these divides. As someone who's at home in desperate worlds, public health, education, parenthood, I can forge the necessary compromises so we can better address these challenges. In order to achieve the social, emotional, and academic outcomes we want for our kids, our school community needs mindful work, and I can help build the bridges, mend the divisions, and set our visions for the future.
Thank you. That was very well timed. Appreciate it. Next up is Larry Butler. Larry?
Thank you. My name is Larry Butler, and I'm running for school board for one primary reason, and that's that I think I can help steer the board in a good direction. I have extensive experience as a businessperson and an investor, which should bring some help to understanding and rationalizing the budget. I serve on the board of several, both corporate and nonprofit boards. I'm on the board of the Sendigo Autism Services in Carbondale. I'm the head of the Finance Committee there. So I believe I have education, work background, and current involvement in boards that I think I'll do a great job. Secondarily, I also have three kids in Aspen Public Schools, including my daughter, who has autism. So I have a particular sensibility to helping not only kids who need a little bit of extra, but all kids, because they're all different, all have different needs. Third reason I'm running is that I love Aspen. Family been here three years. I guess we all love Aspen, because we wouldn't be doing this otherwise. And I feel after six years here, it's time for me to give back to the community and take on some civic responsibility. I'm also a team player and consensus builder. I'm very opinionated, but I'm also very open-minded. And there are some real serious issues currently running through our school system and school systems throughout the country, and so I want to be involved at what I think is a crucial time in peacefully and civilly setting a course for the Aspen School District in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Appreciate it. Susan Zimmet, you are next.
All right. Do I start right away?
You may start. No.
I'd like to start my remarks tonight by thanking the media and all the people involved in organizing tonight's event. Typically, school issues are not glamorous and do not receive much attention, so tonight's event is a good thing for this community. My name is Dr. Susan Zimmet, and I'm running for reelection to the school board. I'm the only incumbent running, so while the other five candidates will speak to you tonight about what they would like to do if they are elected, I would like to talk about what I've actually done the past four years. One of the most important things we accomplished during my time in office was hiring a new administrative team. From the beginning of my term four years ago, it was evident to me that we needed new leadership. The board conducted a comprehensive climate and culture survey that revealed alarming results, and the need for new leadership was clear. We did have to clean house. Starting with the position of superintendent, our board conducted a national candidate search and then a rigorous interview process. We decided to hire Dr. Dave Baugh, a recent winner of the Superintendent of the Year Award in Pennsylvania. Under the board's supervision, Dave then promoted Mr. Mulberry to Assistant Superintendent, was instrumental in recommending Ms. Strasburger to be the new high school principal after an exhaustive search, hired Amy Kanjorski as the new middle school principal, and Ashley Bodkins as the new elementary school principal, both also after extensive searches. In addition, he promoted Simone Grogan to direct the preschool cottage and hired two new outstanding assistant principals at the schools.
Thirty seconds.
So at the beginning of my term, our district had a very unsettled situation regarding our senior administration. The board recognized there was a serious problem and took direct action to address that problem. Fast forward to the present, and I'm happy to report to the community that we have addressed our leadership issues head-on by bringing in some of the best talent to be found in America. An equally important step was putting in place a system to retain our most talented teachers and attract the most qualified ones, and we know that students learn best when teachers are happy and supportive. So this involved a two-pronged plan, the master agreement, and housing stock for our teachers. Then the bond issue last election cycle, and focusing on the education of our children primarily.
I'm gonna have to say thank you there, Susan Zimmet.
Thank you very much.
I know, it's a brutal format. Oh, I'm sorry. John, you're next, if you would. John Galambos.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is John Galambos. Robin and I have been a part of this community since 1993. That's 28 years. We've raised three kids here, and they've all attended Aspen Schools from K through 12. I am running with a grateful heart for what this district means to me and my family. I have three very unique kids. One is a STEM girl who loves policy, one is a free-thinking artistic problem solver, and one is an amazing leader who's gifted at gathering people. This school system allowed them to become very unique citizens of this world. They did not all come through this system and be the same person. They all got to explore and grow as very unique people. And the school system also taught them how to think critically. I love that about our schools. Since they've graduated, I've stayed involved in this district. I've served on DAC as well, and a couple of search committees. I'm very proud of my role as co-chair last year with Cynthia Chase on the bond and tax campaign. 110 million will do some amazing things for us. My candidacy has been endorsed by the Aspen Education Association. Two years ago, the campaign for the board was a referendum on the past administration. I see this campaign being about the future of our schools. I look at it this way, as this campaign is about leadership in the tone the BOE sets for the district and for the community. I will lead by creating stability, building bridges, and restoring community. We are an excellent public school. Now is the time for reasoned, level-headed leadership to help deliver a high-level, high-quality educational experience for every kid in our district. Thank you.
Would you like to yield some time to another candidate?
Suzie.
Next is Stacy Wees.
I'm Stacy Weiss.
Oh, I'm sorry. You may go too.
That's okay. Geisel, Weiss. Can I start?
My apologies.
I'm Stacy Weiss, and I'm a candidate for the Aspen School Board because I want to serve the children of our community by bringing an educator's perspective to the boardroom. Successful boards include people who bring a variety of skills and experience to the table, and our district has benefited from having representatives from the business, real estate, legal, and medical professions, along with community volunteers, and of course, parents. As an educator with 32 years' experience, including 20 years as a teacher in Aspen, I believe I'm uniquely qualified to contribute a perspective that has been missing on the board up until now. I understand the ways that board policies can play out in the classroom, and how budget decisions can impact learning. I bring a knowledge of our institutional history, and I know firsthand what it takes to support and empower teachers to do their best work on behalf of our students. As we delve into the issues tonight, I want to demonstrate that I offer not only my background as an educator, but also a thoughtful and balanced approach to decision-making, one that values the input of all stakeholders, yet is student-centered. I will aim to be a leader who models respectful discourse and collaborative problem-solving. During my tenure at Aspen Elementary School, I had the privilege of working alongside our dedicated teachers and administrators, and I'm proud to have received AEA's endorsement as well. I'm immensely proud to have been part of a school culture that educates the whole child and puts students first. This is my goal and my promise to you. As a board member, I will base my decisions on what is best for our students, so that each and every one of them has the tools they need for success in school and in life. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, and I swear this was a random lineup, but given your last name, I'm sure you're used to going last. So Anna Zane, thank you.
Yes, I am used to it. Hi, I'm Anna Zane. I am a mom of four kids in the Aspen School District, and I was lucky enough to also be born and raised in Aspen. Stepping foot in this auditorium today brings back a lot of memories. Not only did I get to do my eighth grade graduation on this stage, but I got to watch my own kids graduate from eighth grade, and I've performed on this stage and had these lights shining in my eyes many a times. So I have a lot of experience with the Aspen School District. You know, one of the really great things about growing up in a small town and then raising your kids in a small town is the relationships that you build. And I actually have relationships with all the people here on this stage, new relationships now with you guys. Each of us have interacted in different ways. And recently, I was talking with Kathy Klug, who has known me since my childhood and now has become an adult friend and mentor. And talking about this campaign, she said, you know, Anna, one of the best things about you is that you show up. You show up for everything. And I really think that's true. You know, one thing about campaigning that's not exactly very fun is that you have to do a lot of self-promotion, but you also have to do a lot of self-reflection. And during that self-reflection, I looked back on all of the time I've had in the district, not only as a student, but as a parent. And I realized Kathy was right. I've showed up, and I've showed up a lot. As soon as my daughter started kindergarten, I was there in the classroom. I was stuffing Friday folders and gluing gingerbread houses and, you know, organizing events with the PTA. And then my work and my volunteering became even deeper when I joined the District Accountability Committee and I joined school accountability committees. From there, that led to me understanding what was going on in the district, the successes and the challenges that we were having. And that led eventually to me feeling like I needed to help bring about change and turn our school around and bring it to a new place. So it looks like my time is up, but I'm sure you're gonna learn more about me tonight, and we'll go from there. But what you can know about me is that I'm gonna show up.
Thank you. Thanks to each of you. I really appreciate that. So it's now time for our pop quiz, which we think will both inform voters about what candidates know about the Aspen School District, and we think it will please all students in the district, who are likely quite familiar with pop quizzes. So we have a system where we will draw a candidate's name from one hat and then draw a quiz question from another hat, and so it's very random. We'd like to wish each candidate good luck with these random quiz questions. We'll see if you've done your homework. David's going to draw a name, and then Megan's going to ask a question. David, our first victim, please.
Anna, had to wait all that time, and now you get to go first on this one.
All right. What is the total amount of the bond that funds facility upgrades and housing?
141 million.
Ooh, close. 114 million.
114, okay.
Stacy.
How many students are in the district? We had 1,653, but that was, oh, for 2020, and 1,636 for 2021, but we would have been happy with 1,600.
It's a number that does fluctuate.
Yes.
And we just passed the October count, so.
I'd give that a gold star.
Suzie.
Where is the community school located?
In Woody Creek.
Absolutely.
Just visited it.
Just checking. Checking, everybody.
John?
What is the salary of the superintendent?
Six figures. And a house.
Spoken like an architect, I might.
Technically accurate, right? $203,940.
There you go.
All right. Krista?
How many games has the Aspen High School football team won this year?
I'm gonna say two. Yes. I've been to them. I have a seventh-grade football player.
All right, and that leaves Larry. Larry?
Right, Larry. What is the district's budget for 2021, 2022?
Could I go for popular music for three hundred, please? I'm gonna guess 70 million.
Oh, no, you're gonna be responsible for more than that. It's 169 million for those of you who end up on the board.
There you go. All right, that was approved. We have some sense of humor, just in case you get to question that later on. All right. So we now turn to a round of relatively pointed questions from David and Megan. And again, I'd like to remind the candidates, you get two minutes for your answers as well. So a little bit of time. I know that most of these answers are worthy of several hours probably of conversation, so forgive us, but two minutes for your answers. All right. So we're gonna start with the topic of the district's response to the COVID crisis. So David has the first question. David?
Thank you, Brent. We'll keep this one simple for a couple of our candidates. Anna, what grade would you give the school district, A to F, on the response to the COVID-19 pandemic, and explain your grade?
I think I'd give the school district an A for effort, but probably a C for actually getting to do what's best for kids at the end of the day. And I'm gonna explain my answer by saying that. So I think that, you know, hindsight's 20/20. COVID was fluid. It's hard to know what's best to do. There was a lot of turmoil at the start of school. I think the thing that we've learned from all of the fallout is that in-person learning is the most important. It would have been great to have had all kids in person from the beginning, but I know that there was a lot that needed to be done to take care of. So that's why I say A for effort. But, you know, I personally watched my kids struggle with remote learning, and it was challenging. So I think it would have been better had we been able to get those kids back to in-person instruction right away. There you go. There's my grade.
Thank you. Krista, we'll have you take that same question. Can you grade the school district A to F on their response to the COVID-19 pandemic and explain?
Well, as I said in my opening statement, I'm gonna have to give us an A, because I think if you compare us to really any school in this country, we really had great success in the end. I think that in the beginning, it was unprecedented times, right? We closed our school in March. That's never happened before. Excuse me. We had to figure out a back-to-school plan with a new superintendent in August. Again, something that was just on the level of stress is a 10. And we did it. We came up, we rallied the community, we rallied the support of the teachers, of the staff, of the kids. Maybe it wasn't perfect in the beginning, but we had in-person learning all year to some degree, and that was a huge success, especially compared to one of my friends at public schools on the East Coast and the West Coast that didn't go back at all. So.
Thank you.
Megan?
John, we'll start this one with you. How do you identify the inevitable learning gaps that occurred during COVID, and how do you think the district should address them?
So how do I identify the learning gap? There are only a few metrics to help us do that. The CMAS was one test, and we did okay. I think we stayed even. It's not really that great for our school. We usually try to excel, but we stayed even, and I think that feels pretty good to me compared to all the chaos that was going on and the stress we put our kids under. So I feel pretty good that we at least maintained. It didn't go down. There's some areas that went down, but at least we maintained. What was the second half?
How do you think the district should address any learning gaps that are identified?
Well, learning gaps should be addressed on the individual scale. I think we have a lot of, we can identify kids that are struggling, and I feel like we have a lot of resources to throw at kids and to help tutor kids and help give them the tools that they lost. I think related to this, I think there's a very big mental strain on our kids. I think we probably lost more there than we did academically. So I believe we need to, we need to use some of that 170 million. So 100 million more than we thought. So let's use some of that to help, help the kids and identify them. It's not, it's not a group thing. It is, we need, we've got individual kids that are struggling. Let's identify them. Let's work with them. Let's ask the community out there. If you're good at math, come. We need you. Volunteer. So and good reading, come and volunteer, and let's get this solved. Thanks.
Suzie, the same question is posed to you. How do you identify the inevitable learning gaps that occurred during COVID, and how do you think the district should address them?
So I agree with John that the CMAS is the simplest place to start to look at, and we did go down in our fourth and fifth grade cohort, we went down in math. So that was disappointing, but not shocking. It was a little difficult to do a comparison, apples to apples, because we had a greater participation rate than the state at large, and so it was very hard to do an exact comparison. But we think we lost a little ground there. In anticipation of lost academic ground due to COVID, we offered a robust summer school, which had great attendance by those with the greatest need. So we were happy about that turnout. We've begun a writing lab at the high school to offer assistance with every type of writing to any student who drops by, and we're very proud of that initiative. Each school is making other similar accommodations to help regain lost academic opportunities without increasing student stress. The principals are well aware of the academic regression nationwide of students due to COVID, and are certainly trying to make coursework as robust as fun classwork can be, while not injecting additional stress with overly aggressive rigor. It's a balancing act. Our awesome administrative team will be managing all year, with senior leadership happy to lend support as needed and make sure each child gains at least a year's growth during, towards their potential, while hopefully remaining joyful and excited to learn. The board will be reevaluating continuously how well the above process is working, as we have prioritized academic updates at each board meeting this year. I'd point out that the mental health regression as well has been significant. We were concerned about. It's hard to identify exactly, and we're grateful to all the agencies in this community, Aspen Hope, all of the Aspen Family Connections that are stepping in at a very aggressive rate to help us with that. Thank you.
Thank you. David?
Stacy, this question is for you. What lessons, good and bad, did we learn from virtual learning environments that could still help support students of all learning styles?
Well, when we closed the schools quite abruptly in March, and we were closed for an extra week beyond spring break, it was a very quick pivot to virtual learning. And so I think everyone had a, quite a challenge, parents, students, teachers, of getting comfortable with the idea of learning online. I think the district's technology program did the best they could to get that up quickly. They have done Zoom meetings before. It wasn't an entirely new thing, but there are so many educational platforms that had to be coordinated, and teachers were teaching not only to a virtual class, but also having to adjust curriculum to make that fit. So it was, it was a big challenge, but I was very impressed with how quickly we pivoted to that. So in that section, I would say we learned that you can use virtual learning platforms, and they can be helpful, and they are certainly a second choice to being in person, but they did work for that short period of time. Over the summer, when things started to look towards what would happen in the fall of 2020, and there had to be some decisions made about whether things would go back in person, or hybrid, or some combination of those items, the process had to go a little deeper in terms of figuring out how to make this work. And I think we learned that there's always a place for technology in our schools when it's used appropriately, but that we want to prioritize in-person learning as much as possible. And having taught some Zoom lessons, piano Zoom lessons for a while, I saw that it works for some children and less well for others. And then we have to have other alternatives so that each child is getting what they need, whether it's in person, or online, or some combination of the two.
Thank you. Larry, same question. What lessons, good and bad, did we learn from the virtual learning environment that could still help support students of all learning styles?
Well, I think the good lesson we learned is that as a district, we were able to pull it off. And that was no small task. There wasn't a lot of time to prepare for it. Everything was so fluid and confusing and difficult to process, so I think the district did a great job. Obviously, in-school learning is better. Anything away from a screen, in my opinion, for our kids is
Anything away from a screen, in my opinion, for our kids is better. But sometimes you have to use what's available. And so the use of technology for in-home learning was better than nothing. Going forward, I think we probably know how to run those programs better than before. Yet I would certainly advocate to use them as little as possible. It's actually interesting because when kids come home from school as a parent, I spend all my time telling them to put down screens, stop with the, with the screens. And yet, when they go to school, the Chromebook gets open, and a lot of the learning is based on screen time. And so I would love to figure out a way. Technology's here. It's not going anywhere. It could be magical and used properly, like remote learning during a pandemic. But I would like to see less reliance on screen time in, in school. There's still nothing like the feel of reading a book. You know, outdoor ed's the perfect example. We all love it because our kids unplug and get to experience the world differently than they would hunched over a screen. So I label it necessary evil, which can be used for wondrous things, but shouldn't be overused.
Great. Thank you. Everyone, take a deep breath. You're doing great. Okay, good.
We're having a debate moment with a fly.
So we're now going to move to a topic that's come up quite a bit, mental health. And David, if you would, the first question.
Yeah. Larry, since we finished with you, we'll let you start on this section. First question, do you think the district has sufficient policies in place to support students' mental health? If so, why or why not?
Well, I don't think we have sufficient resources dedicated to students' mental health because I think it's a growing problem, and it's been greatly exacerbated by the pandemic. I do think that it's something that everyone is heightened in awareness about. And I trust we're going to alter policy to take that into account. You know, having not been on the school board, only seeing things from the perspective of a parent and as a citizen, I'm really reluctant to criticize what's been done. But I do think we could do a better job, and I expect we will, simply because it's become more apparent that we need to address this issue. It's, it's probably always a tough time to be a kid, and this is an especially difficult time. The pandemic, you know, all the gender fluidity issues and the Me Too movement. And there's just a lot for kids to have to absorb and process. And a natural byproduct of that is going to be a need for more assistance on how to process it. So it's, it's something I won't criticize about how it was handled in the past, but I do, I'm optimistic that it's an issue that has risen to prominence, and I'm sure is going to be addressed properly.
Suzie, same question for you. Do you think the district has sufficient policies in place to support students' mental health? Why or why not?
I completely agree with Larry that we can, we can do more, and we will do more, and we should do more, and we need to do more. I think sadly for some time, this valley has been afflicted with higher rates of anxiety, depression, and suicide than other communities. And these mental health conditions, as we all know, have been, only been exacerbated by the COVID pandemic. This is a critical situation, and I advocate additional resources, including hiring mental health recovery counselors and other needed interventions. Mental health issues impact our staff, students, and parents. And addressing them must be a top priority for the board and district. We are grateful to the Aspen Hope Center, Aspen Strong, Aspen Family Connections, A Way Out, AVH, to all the agencies that have been, have been stepping up to help out this incredibly important issue. But, and we need to all collaborate on this really supercritical issue.
Megan?
John and Anna, this one will be directed to both of you. The district has extensive guidelines on how it handles bullying on campus and at-school sanctioned activities in its student handbook. But easy access to the internet means actions that might otherwise be off-campus are now happening at school. Is there anything you think the district could or should do to address cyberbullying and online hate? John, we'll start with you.
Wow. That's a, that's a good question. There is a, there is a lot to be said there. I would, the internet, Instagram, Facebook are really terrible for middle schoolers. And if you're a parent, I would monitor carefully what's being, what's going on. I think it's a very, it's a tool that has just, I didn't have to deal with it. And middle school is hard enough. And it, I think they get over it a little bit in high school, but man, it's, it's, cyberbullying is a brutal issue. I think this is a parent's issue. The district cannot police what's going on in the homes. I think that's the parent's job. It's our job as a parent to monitor and to, to take the phone away if you have to. But it's very difficult for a district to be held accountable for things going on off their campus. I think it's very important on campus to teach and educate kids about the power of this, I don't have my phone with me, I put it away, but the power of that little device to do damage and to do great harm to our kids. So I think it's very important for the school to bring it up and to, and to educate our kids on this. But it's, I don't think it's the district's role. It's our role, the parent's role, to monitor what goes on at home. Thanks.
Anna, same question. Is there anything you think the district could or should do to address cyberbullying and online hate?
Yes, so the district is already doing some things. I mean, I know that we have a digital citizenship program in place that teaches kids about the proper use of technology, what the cyber world looks like, how you be a good citizen in that cyber world. Because, yes, they use it at home, but they're also using it every single day. I do think that it's a shared responsibility between the parents and the district to educate kids about this because it's also almost as fluid as everything we do, right? I mean, what, how old is the iPhone? 13 now, 13 years ago? And think of how our world has changed and how every phone and every new digital platform that you get changes constantly. It's, it's hard as a parent to keep up with these things. I think the district's done an incredible job over the years of educating parents and bringing in specialists and movies and documentaries about how we handle and how we train our kids. And I, I do think it has to be, it has to be a partnership. I agree that we also need to set guidelines that limit the use of technology and make it age-appropriate. You know, it used to drive me crazy that my kindergarten and first graders were using iPads. And we would talk about this in some of our school meetings, that the tactile skills, kids are missing those. They couldn't use scissors, but they knew how to type on an iPad. So, and I also think that as our kids are using technology, we have to teach them, you know, how to type, classic skills that go along with that. And so, yeah, so I, the cyberbullying part, though, is huge. We have to constantly be on our kids and remind kids that growing up is hard, and you have to treat everybody with dignity and respect.
Thank you. David?
Krista and Stacy, this is for you. We're all talking a lot about mental health discussions. We've had great conversations, and they come up a lot, but sometimes they seem nebulous. How would you define investing in mental health in the school district? Is it money? Is it time? Is it staffing? What is, is that mix? Stacy, why don't we start with you, please?
Okay. Well, we know that the district does play an important role with this because students need to be mentally healthy to learn. And so there are currently some significant resources devoted to that. We have a new hire at Aspen Elementary School, a new counselor. Formerly, there was one. Now there's going to be two. And I believe that was partially funded through AEF or perhaps entirely funded by AEF. So there will now be six counselors with two at each of the three schools. There are also two district school psychologists, and there are two Mind Springs counselors as well. And we have access to their services for students through a partnership with Aspen Family Connections. So there are some good resources in place for students who need them. But I also think that we need to have resources that are available to the entire school population, not just in terms of individual counseling or groups. And we do have some group counseling for that as well. But also because it occurs to me that, we've been talking about climate and culture, and we generally refer to that as being the climate and culture of the adult part of the community. But we need to consider the climate and culture for our students and how we build a community in a school. And so that's one resource that isn't necessarily related to staffing. It's more part of the curriculum and how we can integrate that. And staffing is a big part of it, and these things do cost money. But we can also tap into our community's resources and partner with some really wonderful programs in this community. Just in today's paper, there was an article about what the city of Aspen wants to do with a mental health seminar and what that might look like. And I really think the district ought to get involved with that as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Stacy. Krista, same question. How do you define investing in mental health in the school district?
So I really agree with everything I've heard on this stage so far. And I have a little bit different perspective in terms of kind of my role at the VA, where we are seeing some of the highest suicide rates across the country. This is my job as an internal medicine physician. I really actually feel like we're very well-resourced in terms of the psychologists that we have. I reviewed this with the Board of Health this afternoon in terms of all the, you know, actual people that are working in our school between resource officers and psychologists at all the different schools. And I feel like in a lot of ways, we probably need a few different components to this response. So one could probably be somebody a little bit more proactive. I feel like in a lot of ways, these people are reactive. When something bad happens, we have a crisis, we have people to react. Possibly some kind of hired member of a mental health team that would be more proactive, going out and, you know, finding things before they happen, holding seminars. And then I think that the huge component of this, because this is what we really know from a lot of the research around suicide, is that the community response. Making the culture and climate of the school community inclusive, accessible to everybody, as well as our larger community, exemplifying these values. And this, again, is what Stacy brought up, where we really, as a community, and the Aspen City Council brought this up again, we need to like look at our resources that we have, figure out how to coordinate all these resources for everybody. Because that, the school is obviously included in that and should be opened or like hugged with open arms is kind of how I look at it in my head. But we need this entire community response so that when somebody is having a crisis, multiple members from the community can identify them before it reaches the crisis point.
Excellent. So that was three questions on mental health. And since climate and culture has come up quite a bit in responses to that, let's stay in that vein. David, you have the first question.
I do. Stacy, for you, you're a longtime teacher who has the endorsement of the Aspen Education Association, the teachers' organization. Is there anything that frustrated you when you were a teacher that you still feel is unresolved in the district?
There are some things. I think when it comes to climate and culture, the tone overall for the district has to be set from the school board and the superintendent down. But everybody has a role to play in making the system work. And so, of course, you have to have systems for communication that enables all the stakeholders, the teachers, the staff. And I, you know, that includes the custodians and the bus drivers and parents and volunteers and paraprofessionals as well. Everybody has to have a sense that they have a voice and that they have, they're empowered to do their job and the resources as best they can. But they also have a voice when things aren't working, that they should get efficient communication back and forth so that if there is a problem, you hear back from people quickly. And over the years that I taught here, there was a tremendous amount of turnover in administration. When I retired in 2013 to now, there isn't a single administrator who was an administrator at that time. And some of those positions have turned over more than once or twice. So I think that has been a problem where there was just always so much change of administration that things were not always clear. And when norms were set and they'd feel pretty comfortable for a year or two, and then things would shift, and you had to figure it all out. So I think it's really important that our teachers feel empowered and comfortable in discussing the hard issues and having a system that, where they don't feel afraid of retaliation if they bring up problems and, you know, want those problems addressed. And I think just like, you know, students want to feel safe and included and valued and respected, we have to make sure that there's a culture that, that supports that.
Thank you. I failed to mention as moderator that in this particular section, we have customized tailored questions for each of you. So one, one question per person in this round, so.
John, this one's for you. I swear we didn't intentionally make it, so I was targeting you the whole night. You've stated several times on the record that you don't believe this school board race is an issue-based one. Coming out of COVID-19 with equity conversations at the forefront of school board meetings and elections across the country, do you think Aspen is immune to these issues?
I missed the front part.
You've stated several times on the record that you don't believe that this particular school board race is an issues-based one. You cite stability and bridge building, but not so much based on specific issues. And it feels like, at least nationally, that there are a lot of issues on the table right now. Do you think Aspen is immune to these issues?
I don't think Aspen is immune to issues. I don't think, it doesn't feel to me like this campaign and this season in our community is really about hot-button issues. And I feel like, for me, that one of the reasons I'm running is mainly a leadership and, and how, what kind of community do we want to be? It's not, it's not the issues. It's about who we are. And so that's, that's more of why I'm saying what I'm saying. You know, like for, for teachers and administration, we need to create stability because, you know, we've had all turnover from the school nurse to the superintendent. And we need to create stability because that's the best thing for an organization, to have that stable environment. We need to build bridges, you know? And so those things are very important. And it's the tone of the board that has to be set that gets filtered down throughout the different schools and throughout all this entire school system, all the way down to the custodian. It's about the tone. And I feel, you know, from the climate and culture thing, I hammered that a little bit in the paper, but parents, we, we're part of this community too. We got to teach, treat our teachers with respect, our administrators with respect. In, in public forums, we have to be reasoned, calm, deliberate. I believe that we need to work at building consensus with everybody. And I just feel like those are the issues. So it's not all these hot-button things that we hear about nationally. It's, it's how, how does Aspen treat each other? And that's what's important to me because I've been here a long time, and I, I don't like how we're treating each other sometimes.
Thank you. David?
Larry, you're facing five opponents who have spent extensive time teaching in the classroom or discussing district operations as members of the district and school accountability committees. What can you bring differently by jumping straight into the board?
Well, I guess my lack of experience compared to the other candidates kind of makes me the outsider. And there are positives and negatives to that. Giant negative is that I failed the pop quiz of not knowing the district budget amount. Another negative is I don't have all the facts of what's going on at my fingertips. There's also a positive to not having been on the board and not having been enmeshed in kind of the current way things are done. And my attributes as a business leader, as a rational, way things are done. And my attributes as a business leader, as a rational human being, as someone interested in making the schools as great as they can be for all our kids, qualifies me to be on the board. As I mentioned, I've had extensive experience on the board. I know how they need to be run. I know the best practices for boards. And I'm by no means saying these, this board doesn't do that, but I do get the sense that there's room for improvement there. So from an outsider perspective, I think I can bring fresh eyes and fresh thoughts to the, to the board. I do feel also as an outsider that my opinions haven't had to, been milked, you know, or made less direct, because I haven't tried to, had to run for election before. So I'm very outspoken. I do feel very strongly about the hot-button issues. And I do feel that whether you like it or not, they're part of the school, they're part of how we figure out the curriculum, and they're part of everyday life and can't be ignored.
Thank you.
Megan?
Anna, this is for you. Throughout your campaign for the school board, you've maintained that this isn't apolitical office, and that the focus should be on what's best for our kids. But many of your posts on your public Twitter account are inherently political. Your Twitter feed includes a retweet from March 11 that said teachers' unions must be quote abolished, and are quote parasites which cannot be permitted to further harm our children. You yourself just tweeted in June of this year, quote, "The teachers in Aspen fought to keep the school shut for a good part of the year. It was a disaster and embarrassing." How do you separate those statements from the role of board member when trying to work with teachers in the Aspen Education Association?
Yeah, so this is a great question, and I'm glad you brought it up, because I am a political person. You know, I lead a role politically here in our, in our county. And I do believe that schools are apolitical. I think that this race is nonpartisan. It is not to be brought, politics to be brought into that. You know, somebody's personal Twitter account, sure, I have to account for those things. Unfortunately, teachers have also made the school race political. Our very own teacher union submitted questions to us as candidates, and unfortunately, I was saddened to see that a lot of those questions didn't focus on education, they didn't focus on kids, they didn't focus on academics. Instead, they asked hot-button issues about vouchers, about charter schools, and about things that really weren't important to our district. And I stand by that tweet. I really, it really was hard not having kids go to school in person. And there were a lot of teachers that I felt stood in the way of that. You know, like I said, hindsight's 2020, and we can all look back, and I'm sure we all regret things. And there's probably times when teachers said, you know what, I should have just gone into the classroom, and it would have been easier. So we can look at it that way. But going back to it, they're two separate issues for me. I have never brought politics into the school. I have always fought to keep politics out of the school. I've asked for everybody to be respectful and to promote diversity of thought, and support the dignity of differences. And I'll continue to do that. I think it's important to have a school board that's representative of all groups in our community, and all different backgrounds. And for me, it's always been about the kids. It's been about my kids, and it's been about my neighbors' kids, and it's about Aspen School District giving them the best education.
Thank you.
David?
Krista, this is for you. You took a pretty active role in getting the COVID testing into the school district. Dealing with the next potential emergency of staff shortages in a time of crisis, how are you willing to step outside of the conventional job description to meet the needs of the district?
Great question. That was part of my closing statement. That is one thing I wanted to make sure we talked about tonight, because I do feel like we're talking about all these great aspirational hopes that we have for Aspen School District, when at the moment we have a lot of shorting staff, staffs, shorting, excuse me, staffing shortages that we need to address in order to keep our schools running. So yes, I was able last year with a few friends to get the COVID testing. And again, I think that this is something that partly as just the person I am, partly as the position I have as a physician, I was able to not take no for an answer, and work with people until we found the resources we needed to make this happen. I am doing things behind the scenes already on the staffing. I've helped middle school, set up some volunteer organizations to get parents at lunch, because we don't have enough staff to serve lunch in the middle school right now. So we, I've been part of, I cannot take responsibility for this. I can help say that I helped get the ball rolling to make sure that this happened. But I think this is a component of myself that, there'll be a part of me that is a school board member that cannot play this activist role, and wants to set the vision for the school district. And there's the other part of me that when I like to help out, I just can't, can't help myself, I guess, and use the resources I have at my disposal to make it a better school for other people.
Thank you.
Megan?
Suzie, this one's for you. You're going for a second four-year term, and climate and culture remains a big concern in the district. As president of the board, and as someone who has had liaisons with the Teachers Association and the development of a collective bargaining agreement, why do you think climate and culture is still a talking point?
So having made all the changes that we made as a result of that dismal climate and culture outcome, result, outcome, where I am confident now that we have an administrative team that is really going to produce for our community, one of the main reasons I'm seeking reelection is to bring, to fruition all of the work that we teed up the previous four years with respect to respectability, with treating everybody with respect, all of the areas that were dismal in our previous climate and culture survey. We're planning to repeat that survey on a regular basis, make sure we're not deluding ourselves that everything is better, make sure that things actually are better. So I'm proud to run on that record. I'm pleased with the direction the new team is taking this district, and firmly believe that our climate and culture are now also heading in the right direction. As I said, we're going to be doing surveys on a regular basis. I wanted to mention that the community, in my experience, has been very supportive of the board. I think people realize that this position pays nothing, and requires thousands of hours of work, significantly more time when one is the president. So, and nationwide, there's a lot, there is a lot of acrimony directed at school board members. So I'm truly grateful for the support our community has provided. And, you know, want to make sure that I'm not seen as beholden to any one group. I want to be comfortable with all the various stakeholders in our educational system, and still make, be able to make decisions that are in the best interests of our kids, and not necessarily always of the adults. So this is, I think, a relationship where one gets out of it what one puts in it. And I've worked very hard for the community over the past four years, and together with the other board members, I think we've accomplished a lot. And in return, I think we've received nothing but support back from the community.
Thank you. So we have two more sections to go, right? We've been at this an hour, so another deep breath. We're into the final stretch here. So this next section's not any easier. It's about equity. David, if you would. Oh, also, if I may mention that it's, we're back to the format of questions for two candidates in this round.
Thank you, Brent. Larry, as the district continues to focus on climate, culture, and inclusion, do you think that the school board is equipped with the resources and the knowledge to make decisions that support students of all gender identities?
I think we're moving toward that. I think that a lot of this terminology and thought is new to the district and the country. And I think the word equity is a powerful word, and has a lot of different meanings to different people. Clearly, we need to have a district that believes in equity, and provides a path for all students and all teachers to be treated fairly. Sadly, I don't agree that this job is apolitical. I think it's impossible for it to be apolitical, when so many of these issues are what we believe we should teach our kids. You know, critical race theory is, you know, it's like the words you're never supposed to say, and everybody has a different, a different definition of it. But my definition is that there has been and continues to be systemic racism in this country. And we need to move forward with a discussion about how to correct that. I feel very strongly that cancel culture is terrible, and that as a board member, and one of the key roles as a board member in a board, is to kind of bridge this gap between new attitudes, new outlook on equity, without making people feel bad about what happened in the past. And I think bringing this, speaking about it openly, discussing it in the school, incorporating it in the curriculum are all key to coming up with solutions to the problems.
Thank you, Larry. Krista, same question. Do you think the school board is equipped with the resources and the knowledge to make decisions that support students of all gender identities?
Gender identities?
Yeah.
Sorry, I couldn't. So I think that this is a, again, kind of with the COVID pandemic, maybe we're entering some uncharted waters. From, just from what my kids bring home themselves, and what they see on social media, or talk about with their friends, or see on YouTube, or the news, they definitely are exposed to things that I don't even know what they're talking about sometimes. So perhaps we could always use more resources, especially as a different generation, than what the generation we're trying to educate is being seen every day. I think that the board, from the meetings I've attended, are trying to do this. I mean, in the terms of reviewing the equity survey and hiring Bill Dela Cruz to kind of give some guidance, I think that's a fantastic first step. I'm not sure I even know myself what resources are really necessary, but I'm open, like Larry, to figuring out what they are, because I really think that our kids are going to be exposed to all sorts of things. And I'm not sure even as a parent, I know how to talk about them with. And the more the school can provide some support, foundation, opportunity to explore different viewpoints, the better off we're going to be. And our kids, for sure, are going to be.
Thank you.
Megan, you're up.
Same line of thinking. When we talk about gender fluidity and identity, a lot of times that conversation starts and becomes most accessible with pronouns. Time and again, we hear the phrase "all means all" in equity conversations in the district. Is it possible to ensure that all students are heard and respected if one student uses different pronouns, and another student says their beliefs prevent them from respecting those pronouns? This is directed at both Suzie and Anna. Suzie, we'll start with you.
So is your question specifically on gender fluidity?
Specifically pronouns. So is it possible to ensure that all means all when we talk about all students and the whole student in equity, if one student uses different pronouns, and another student's belief systems would prevent that student from using the preferred pronoun of one of his or her peers or theirs?
Well, we would like to get on the same page with everybody. That's sort of a given. And I think that will be done with collaboration, with conversations, with counselors involved. This is not something that a school board member would make willy-nilly. This is very important to get right. We don't want to get this, this kind of important issue to a student who's in, I think you're talking elementary or middle school grades, or any, any grades. We don't want to get that wrong. We know that, you know, we want to concentrate, we want to make sure a third grader can read. We know that if they can't, they drop out of high school at an alarming rate. We want to make sure we're not dealing with a lot of emotional issues that we could resolve very easily with counselors being on the same page, reaching these decisions before they become controversies. We need to be on the same page from day one, so we can work on the things that are really going to determine whether kids succeed or fail. We want all of our kids to succeed. We want to jump on those issues that you're talking about, so that it's all, it's all agreed upon, before these, these issues become painful, controversial, and could really ruin their day, their week, their month, their year. And increase, and it's quite highly associated with increased mental illness. And we want to make sure we jump on that, and, and reach an agreement with the kids, with the counselors, with the teachers, with, with everybody involved, the parents, so that, that issue does not keep popping up.
Anna, same question. Do you think it's possible to ensure that all students are heard and respected if one student uses different pronouns, and another student says their beliefs prevent them from respecting and using those pronouns?
Yeah, so this is a great question, and this actually just came up on the first day of school for my high schooler. She was asked in English class to state her name and her pronouns, and I think her favorite word, or something along those lines. And, you know, I thought, I thought it was very interesting. Here you are on the very first day of school, you're worried about your hair. You haven't seen your peers, some of your peers in over a year because of remote learning. You know, you're worried about all of these different things, and then you throw that out there. And I think it was really caught, caught a lot of the kids off guard. I asked my girlfriend, whose child recently came out as non-binary and uses pronouns, how, how does your child feel about this? What do they, what do they want to hear? What do they want to know? And that child really didn't even know yet. So I think it's a situation that we're all starting to learn about. How do we handle these things? What do we want to do? And instead of necessarily focusing on that, I want to, I want to bring up this quote by Sarah Strasberg, our principal, the way she defines equity. She says, "Equity is about ensuring that all students have what they need to succeed, and making sure they feel valued and respected." I think that's the bigger issue. I think that's what we want in the classroom. We want everybody to feel comfortable. We want them to feel valued. We want them to feel respected. We want them to feel able to express themselves, and feel that it's okay to do that, to not feel like they have a target on their back, or that they're somehow different for expressing different viewpoints, and that's a bad thing. You know, one really great thing that came out of the equity survey that was recently done at the high school this past spring is it showed that Aspen High School actually is really healthy. We have, for the most part, a healthy student, student environment. The three issues of concern were body shaming, social class, and the self-censoring of one's political orientation. So we do have some areas that we can work on, and there's always a risk to improve that. But I go back again to Sarah Strasberg's definition of equity, that what we really need to focus on is how do we make sure everybody feels valued and respected in the classroom?
Thank you.
David?
John, and Stacy, this is for you. The Board of Education is now looking at revising a draft equity resolution for the district. In your eyes, what does an ideal equity resolution look like, and how specific should it be? Stacy, why don't you tackle that first, please?
Okay. Well, that's, that's a good question. And I'm glad that we're getting support from Bill Dela Cruz and his organization, because I do think this is a new area for school boards, for teachers, for families. And we're all exploring it together. So it's useful to have someone with some experience with this. I did read the original equity draft proposal from 2020. And I've also been trying to learn and educate myself over the last year or two about this issue. And I read a couple of books. I have to say, it really challenged my thinking, and I did feel that it was helpful to do that. This draft proposal was based on some phrases, anti-racism, and I really see this as a, that's a big part of it, certainly. But I am now thinking that it is much, a much broader issue. In addition to anti-racism, there are many other issues where we have students who feel that they are marginalized in some way, or that they are unable to be themselves in school, and they don't feel safe speaking out, you know, whether it's bullying, or the issues of, you know, what happens online, that isn't necessarily happening in school, but which affects their performance in school. So I am curious to see what the process is for revising that. And have been following it on the school board meetings the last couple of weeks. And I understand that they're just now in the process of making some of those revisions. So I would really like to have some feedback from Mr. Dela Cruz, and to see what our next step is. Because I think it was a good start, but I'm not sure it's the last word on the subject. I do think we need to figure it out and pass something so that we can also begin to establish some policies that support it, so that kids are getting help with that as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Wait, is there, oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Sorry.
Go ahead, Larry.
Thanks. Larry, sorry.
Can you repeat the question, please, David?
Yes, I can. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Oh, no, I'm sorry, Larry, it's John. I'm sorry, John. The Board of Education is looking at revising a draft Equity Resolution for the District. In your eyes, what does an ideal Equity Resolution look like, and how specific should it be?
So I'm not too familiar with the board's work on this subject. I think in addressing this, I think it's very important for us to collectively define our terminology, and collectively with input from everyone in this community. I welcome outside consultants on this, because it is, as everybody said, it's new territory. And, you know, we're all white guys up here, and white women, sorry, to use a generic term, sorry. I hope we're investing in our Hispanic community to help form that document, because I feel like their voices often aren't heard in our community, even though they're a large part of our town and our school district. So I want to make sure that we bring in, deliberately bring in, every voice we can to help form that document. And I'm more than willing to get up to speed on it, and to learn, if I'm elected on the board, I'll have a big learning curve as to what this is. I do want, at the end of the day, our policy should be that we treat every kid the same, and every child in here has the equal opportunity to achieve the best education that they can get. And by that, we have to define our biases. We have to look at the ways we, you know, historically marginalized people and historically treat people in this town. And again, I really wish we invite the Hispanic community into this document, because I feel there's a lot to be learned from that. But I'll get up to speed somehow.
Thank you. So we're now on to our final topic of the night, and I have to say, in simpler times, this may have been the only topic that we would talk about, which is about teachers and classrooms. So obviously, they're key to the whole operation here. And so, David, if you would, the first question.
Thank you. Suzie and Larry, this is for you. A recent senior exit survey for the class of 2021 revealed that some students feel a growing push for the international baccalaureate IB classes, sometimes to the detriment of non-IB class work. Do you think the district is putting too much emphasis on the IB curriculum, and how can it support students who don't wish to pursue an IB diploma? Suzie, why don't we start with you on that?
Sure. So we know that there was widespread approval for adopting the IB framework for pre-K through 12th grade from all of the groups surveyed, including teachers. So we appear to be all on the same page with respect to the adoption, except for this survey. Now, the survey, which Krista and I helped develop for the DAC Committee, I think it's great information, and I think that we need to look at our IB courses and make sure that they will, that the offerings are going to be varied enough, that there will be a class for every child that they're excited to take, and hopefully, five or six classes, junior and senior year, that they're excited to take. We are expanding the offerings. We have art, we have music, we have so many options that will probably excite every kid. Whether they do the diploma or not, it's not mandatory. If they want to take a few cool courses and avoid the nerdy, quote, nerdy courses, that's fine. Nobody is going to be pushed to take, do the IB diploma, which is six courses 11th grade and six courses 12th grade. We will keep non-IB courses. We'll need to keep some for scheduling coordination. Not everybody, athletes won't all be able to take those six courses. So there will be a good curriculum that meets every kid's need, and it was great input from in that survey, to learn that they, that some will feel that they wouldn't have wanted to take all the IB courses.
Thank you. Larry, again, do you think the district is putting too much emphasis on the IB curriculum, and how do you support students who don't wish to pursue an IB diploma?
No, I don't think the district is putting too much emphasis on it. I think having emphasis on it is terrific. I think that ultimately, like everything else we've been discussing, it's a learning curve for the district, and the best way to implement it. I just would like to quickly read that the IB mission statement from Aspen High School is beautiful. It says, "Students to become active, compassionate, and lifelong learners who understand that other people with their differences can also be right." So, I mean, to me, that's a great ethos, and it should be pursued. Do I think that every kid is going to be pursuing the IB program in its fullest offering? No. We need to make sure that they're not thought of as lesser-than, or second-class, and they have to be offered alternatives. But I'm in favor of kind of having a rigorous educational opportunity to those kids that are excited to take the challenge. And it's distressing, you know, if students who are also athletes somehow don't get the opportunity, but I'm sure that could be worked out. But again, there's so much change in our society and the way things are being done, that I don't think that you could be that critical of the way the IB has been implemented. Everyone I've spoken to, I think almost everybody in the board has written in the papers, made a statement that they're in favor of it. And it's a great program. It just has to be implemented in a way that doesn't leave people behind who either don't want to or can't pursue that level of academic challenge.
Thank you. Megan?
There's been several references this evening to the high turnover within the district. So this question is geared for Krista and John. How do you strike the balance between giving new leadership and opportunity to meet the curriculum goals versus identifying an intervention point with the administration if, in your estimation, success metrics aren't being achieved? And Krista, we'll start with you.
Okay. So the question is, giving them space, but then identifying goals?
Yeah, so giving them space to pursue those goals, but at what point, is there a point for you that there's a point of intervention? If you, in your estimation, those goals are not being achieved and success is not happening?
Okay.
Do you give space? Yes, where's the balance?
So yes, since I've been here, which has only been four years, there has been quite a bit of turnover, as we have heard tonight. And I am very excited about the new administration we have at the district level and at all the different schools level. And I do feel like these are truly the experts in education, that they do need to be given space to do their craft. I don't particularly appreciate it when people come, tell me what Dr. Google had to say about the condition they think they have, and I feel like this probably should be afforded the same opportunity to the teachers and administrators at our school district. That being said, there are measures of what our teachers are doing, and these, right now in our school district, have to do with some of these assessments that they're giving throughout the year. The one I'm most familiar with is the STAR assessment. So right now, we have just received the CMAS test scores, and we've had our STAR assessment scores for the fall as well. So I think that there are objective measures we can look at, and we can track throughout the year, and there should be very clear intervention points if we're not meeting certain targets that are likely set by the board, that we can intervene and take a more active and proactive role in making sure our children are receiving the education we want them to.
John, same question. At what point do you balance giving leadership space to implement their curriculum goals or identifying an intervention point if, in your estimation, success is not being achieved?
It's a good question. On Friday, we had a DAC meeting with Zoom, and Theron presented some stats and some data that has been, that we've just recently received, and identifying some problem areas and identifying other areas that need to be addressed, as well as things that are going well. I asked a question to him of saying, what is a reasonable timeline for making these changes at that level, it's fourth grade, fifth grade? And it, because I feel like we often are putting unrealistic expectations on our educators and our administration. But what was interesting to me, what Theron's response was, you know, a lot of these things take a couple of years, but we are going to push hard and get after fourth and fifth grade math and literacy. And so I think our administration has a really good grasp on what needs to be done. And as Krista said, I'm not an educator. I'm not a doctor. You know, we all like think we are, and I have a lot of clients who think they're architects. So we have to trust. We've got a good team. We've built a good team. It was demolished in the last five years. It's 100% new practically. And so I feel like we've got a good team. We got to give them space to do their craft. That's been said. They got to give them time, and that's part of, you know, one of my goals is create stability. We want to give them time. Yes, there are things that we can do as the board that will, if we start seeing systematic problems at certain levels, then there's intervention that needs to happen. But I think the administration's got their pulse on this very well.
Thank you.
Great. David, you have, I believe, the last question.
Hey now. I have the last question.
Go ahead, Megan.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. Hey now.
The last question is for Stacy and Anna. Given the high cost of living in this valley and the education needed to become a teacher, do you think the district is compensating teachers adequately? And if not, how should the district bridge the gap? If so, do you think teachers would agree with you? Anna, I'll let you start.
Yeah, so this is something that, when I was co-chair of the DAC in 2016 and 2018, and we did an exhaustive kind of biopsy of the district and everything that was going on, one of the things that we discovered was that our teacher's salary schedule is not very competitive. So not only do we have a high cost of living here in the Aspen area, but, well, first of all, you can never really pay teachers what they're worth, right? They have a capped salary. So that's the first part of it. But what we have is we have a teacher's salary schedule that's really not competitive to the cost of living. So we start teachers here at a lower wage. We train them, we get them integrated into our district, they become established here. And then at that five to seven years, we aren't competitive in paying them the same amount as places, let's say, like Boulder. So while Boulder's, you know, a nice place to live, Aspen is still much better, and we need to pay our teachers a more competitive salary, so that they will want to stay here. I think in addition to that, there's also the issue of housing, and, which is why, you know, why I got on board and pushed for bipartisan support for this bond, because I felt it was really important that we had to have teacher housing. You have to have a place for these people to live. You get, I mean, the majority of teachers are women, these are wonderful male teachers, but you have women who come here, and after five to seven, 10 years of being in the district, a lot of them do want to start families. They can't be in a one-bedroom apartment with a roommate that costs $3,000 a month. That's ridiculous. So as a board, I'd really like to see that. They've done a lot of great work with the master agreement, but the salary schedule is still something that absolutely needs to address, and I don't know any teacher that you would ask, and they'd say, no, don't, don't, don't pay me more.
Stacy, your perspective.
Well, I think that's one of the biggest priorities for me as a potential board member, because we have to not only attract teachers, but we have to retain them. And I was very pleased to see that the master agreement happened, because it's something that the teachers have been talking out about for as long as I could remember. And so that was a huge step forward. But salaries, while there was a raise last year for starting teachers, it went from like $40,000 to $43,000. You cannot live anywhere in this valley on $43,000 when you're still paying back college loans, and those are substantial, and all of the pressures that go on for teachers. And, you know, of course, we also want teachers to be respected, and climate is important, an important part of that, but you can't take respect to the supermarket and buy your groceries with it. So I did a little inquiring about that, and Summit County just went up to $50,000 as a starting salary. I think Steamboat is at about 48 or 49, somewhere in there. And that's not a massive amount of money either. But if you have a young person who's just finishing school, a master's degree, and they want to come to a ski resort to teach, and it is a very attractive place for young people, but they can't stay if they can't, and they aren't even going to come here if they know that, you know, on the other side of the hill, they can go someplace and get a little bit more. So that's really important. Housing is helpful, too, but I really think, and I'm glad we're doing it, the bond is moving forward well, and I'm thrilled to see it. But salary's number one, and we have to find ways to make that happen in the budget. And it's challenging, because Tabor really limits what we can spend on schools. We have a lot of other sources of money, but in the long run, we have to work on getting the state to, you know, fully fund schools, so that teachers can be well-paid and not have to have three jobs.
Thank you very much. Thanks to each of you. So we've come to just about the end of the forum, and now we'll give each candidate the opportunity for a closing statement. We'll go in the reverse order of the opening statements. So Anna, if you would, if you would start by giving us your closing statement, that'd be great.
Great. So I have a prepared statement, but I do want to address a question earlier that was brought up. You know, I think there's a difference between teacher unions and teachers, and I've had a lot of really wonderful teachers in my life that have had a great impact on me and who've had a great impact on my kids. And I am 100% supportive of teachers. I'm not a big fan of the National Teacher Union. So, that being said, most people that run for school boards have really good intentions, and I can say that we're lucky here tonight to have really committed, talented people. This has been a wonderful forum. It's been informative for me, and a great forum that isn't boring, too, about school issues. So thank you, guys. So, and I have to say that it's really nice to have six people running for three seats, because it was just a few years back that we had seats go unfilled for the school board. You know, I disagree with John. I think there's some serious issues facing our school district. I think we have serious academic issues. We not only have kids that have pandemic learning loss, but that have unfinished learning. Those things need to be addressed. They need certain skills to be successful in life, and we need to make sure that our kids have those skills, and we need to make sure that we're putting all of our resources towards helping those kids that have been most impacted by all of this. We also have, you know, mental health concerns that are huge. It's a huge problem. I know firsthand the impact that mental health can have on a family, and I think that keeping and attracting great teachers is also a huge priority. So I have a lot of skin in this game. I'm an involved and active parent. I know the successes and the struggles that our children and our teachers are going through every day. My experience working on prior seemingly unconquerable challenges that our district has faced has given me the confidence to know that these current challenges before us now are just that, challenges. And we can conquer them, and we can make our district stronger and better. And my hope is that during these highly political and emotional times in our country, when we seem to be so divided and so judgmental of others, that voters would give me the grace of looking at my missions accomplished and the positive impact I've had, my commitment from day one to showing up and improving our children's education. And if you give me your vote, you'll know I'll do just that, and I'll continue to do so until the job is done. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Anna, appreciate that. Stacy, you're next.
Well, I want to thank our media sponsors and the school district tonight for the opportunity to speak with you. The fact that we have six candidates running for three seats speaks well about the vitality of democracy in Aspen, and it points to the high regard that our community has for its schools. And that's a really wonderful thing. It's very encouraging. It makes me feel very optimistic about our future and our kids. At their best, public schools have the capacity to unite us by teaching us to live and work with people from diverse backgrounds and differing viewpoints, and it's all for the good of our children. And that's why I'm so deeply committed to earning a seat on the school board. My family moved here in 1993, when I landed my dream job at Aspen Elementary School after teaching on Long Island for 12 years. And to the best of my knowledge, there hasn't been an educator's voice on the school board for at least those 28 years. I actually tried to go back and find out, and it was a tough thing to research, because, well, you can look at who previous board members were, there were no records about what their professions were. So there hasn't been an educator's voice on the school board in at least that amount of time. And with your help in this election, I would like to be that voice. As a teacher with a lifelong commitment to public education, and as the parent of an Aspen graduate, and also having taught, as I sat here looking at our panel, I have taught all of the children of all of the people on this. have taught all of the children of all of the people on this, on this panel in some capacity over the years. Some of it was a long time ago. I'm proud of our district's unique strengths. Things like outdoor ed and experiential ed and our arts programs and some of our other innovative programs. Whoever thought that there would be an avionics program in a high school is pretty remarkable. But I'm also mindful of the challenges that we face and I'll work hard to ensure educational excellence in Aspen. If you agree that our students would benefit from a teacher's perspective in the boardroom, I ask for your vote on November 2nd.
Thank you very much. John, you are next.
Thank you very much for this time. It has been educational to hear all these responses and I am pleased that Aspen has a lot of great options. I've seen a lot of changes in our town in the last 28 years, including that stupid article calling us a small city. We've gone from wearing marmot to microwaves, but one constant has been our excellent public school system. There are, have been ups and downs, but through it all, the district has always been the glue of this community. It is the reason we remain locals and it's the reason why many move, who move here, stay here. I want us to maintain that commitment to public education. We can't just focus on college prep. We are a public school that needs to focus on every student in our district. We are informed by our mountains and rooted in the outdoors. We are connected to a community that values and embraces the arts. Yes, I want excellence in academics, but more than that, I want our schools to give all kids the tools to develop their unique skills and passions. By creating stability, building bridges, and restoring community, we can provide a place for all students to grow as thinkers, dreamers, innovators, and world changers. One last thing, how we go about this is very important to me. We have to remember that we are a small, tight community. How we speak to each other is important. The humans our students become is more important to me than a test score. How we value our teachers and staff directly influences their ability to teach and to perform. I am a collaborator, collaborator. I will listen to all stakeholders and different points of view. I will represent our community. I'm a creative problem solver. And I would like your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Suzie, you're next.
So thank you again to the members of the media and to all the people who worked so hard to produce tonight's candidate's forum. And thank you to my fellow candidates. Though this job pays nothing, here we are with a slate of candidates that is as strong as any I can remember in my 30 years of living in Aspen. I would like to say that the thing I feel proudest about is that during my four-year term, we got the school board to come back to focusing on the education of our children. This seems elementary, but it is not. Students only learn when teachers are supported. And as you've heard, we've made teacher support a top priority. We're probably not all the way there yet, but we have made it a huge priority. We heard tonight several different visions for our school district. And I would say what sets me apart from my fellow candidates is that of the, is that of the six of us, I'm the only one who has already done this job. I have a proven track record of producing results for our community. During my time in office, we brought in a new administrative team, as we've discussed, closed on a major bond issue, prioritized teacher compensation and housing, and revamped our curriculum and instruction. I know how our school system works and I know how to do this job. With all due respect to each of them, and I really do respect them, none of the other candidates can make that claim. We also heard tonight very faint echoes of the culture war that is now raging across America. This is a watershed election for our community. We can't let the anger and hostility that is now commonly seen at other school boards come here. We, our school board has always been independent and nonpartisan. We have to keep this about the kids getting a great education. The kids don't have representation in the boardroom, nor do parents or taxpayers without kids in the district. Board members must be able to represent our entire community, and I have shown that I can. I have shown that we can, what we can accomplish when we keep an eye on the kids. And I ask you to grant me another four years to help get our kids that much closer to their dreams. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Larry, if you would.
I'm going to second everybody's thank yous to all the people and media companies involved in getting this night together and to all the other candidates. Learned a lot and this was illuminating and interesting and I enjoyed myself, so thank all of you. The name of my campaign, because I needed to come up with one, is Aspen Ideal. And, you know, I've been coming to Aspen for 30 years and always wanted to live here, not as much as my wife, but here I am. And, you know, you always hear locals say, rightly so, how it used to be different and it used to be a small town, you know, there wasn't a Chanel boutique and, and, you know, movie stars walking around. And, you know, living here now for six years, I do have a sense that it was better in the old days because there was more community. And I agree with John that the heartbeat of the community can be the public schools, at least for a segment of the population. And I think I share, everybody, all the candidates, that we just want this school district to be the best it can be for as many people as it can be. For me, the key to all of this are the teachers. They're the ones we entrust with our, wow. We're the ones that we entrust with our kids all day long. They need to be respected. Stacy, if they don't have a direct seat on the board, at least they need to have a voice. And while we all want to pay them more and retain them and stay here forever, the key is to have the teachers feel that they're appreciated, that their voice matters, and that they are heard. Money, of course, would be great too. And as I mentioned, I have a lot of financial experience and I want to find out why with our huge budget, we are not paying our teachers the highest rates in the entire state. It just doesn't make sense to me. No one's been able to answer that for me. And that'll be the first thing I really want to dig up. We should have the highest paid teachers in the entire state of Colorado. And they need to have more of a, of a voice because they're with our kids so many hours of the day.
Thank you.
We need to trust them and bring them under, you know, into the tent.
Thank you. Thank you, Larry. Sorry to enforce the time. Krista, you get the last word.
Thank you. Yes, I agree. Thank you to all of our sponsors and media and everybody who came and listened to us tonight. I agree with Suzie, it's kind of a dry topic to talk about, school. And I am so thrilled to live in Aspen where, like, I have friends that talk about school. So this has been a lot of fun. Thank you all. My candidacy again is about supporting all kids to achieve their highest potential, both socially, emotionally, and academically. And I do feel this requires stronger cohesion in our school community. Seconding what Larry just got done saying. I appreciate all the comments that we heard tonight and all of these topics that I think are extremely important. And again, kind of back to this, I feel like some of this has been aspirational and at this particular moment, we need some boots-on-the-ground help from our community and from other communities with our staffing shortages, just to keep this school open and functional. Because without that, we can't achieve anything that we've really discussed tonight. That being said, my goals remain to advocate for all students at all levels of ability to receive the support and enrichment they need, to continue work on the strategic allocation of the bond and tax measures, to pursue policies based on science that will keep members of our school community both mentally, mentally and physically safe and healthy, to prioritize investments in housing and other programs so our excellent teachers can continue to work and live in our community, to continue to ensure that we are recruiting the best and brightest teachers in order to ensure the long-term success of our schools, and I think most importantly, to foster a climate of compromise, inclusivity, so that we can begin to heal our school community and move forward. If these things sound good for you, please vote for me. Thanks.
Thank you very much. So we'd really like to sincerely thank each of the candidates for running for elected office in the first place. You're doing so in order to serve both the school district and the community, and that's laudable. I'm sure the community appreciates your, your efforts. Running for office is not easy and certainly fielding hard questions from informed journalists like Megan Taggert and David Cruz is also not easy or necessarily fun. In preparing for tonight, I was greatly impressed by the knowledge that both of them have about a lot of nuances of the school district. So it's, it's fortunate for the district to have such informed reporters covering you. We'd like to thank the members of the live audience for being here, as well as the crew at Grassroots TV for producing the event. A reminder that this forum has been recorded and will be available for replay on the Grassroots website, as well as on the social media pages of The Times and the Aspen Daily News. I'm Brent Gardner Smith, the news director at Aspen Public Radio, along with Megan Taggert, editor of The Daily News, and David Kraus, editor of The Aspen Times. Thank you for joining us tonight. And don't forget to return your ballot by November 2nd. Thanks again to the candidates. Good night.